City of Stevens Point Common Council Meeting, recorded February 17, 2020.
At 7 o'clock, we will call the regular meeting of the Common Council to order. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Jennings.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Nabel.
Here.
Zarazua.
Here.
Gangson.
Here.
Lewinsky.
Here.
Niebon.
Here.
Dugan.
Here.
Dalton.
Here.
Fischler.
Here.
And Morrow.
Here.
All present.
All present. Thank you very much, and I'd like to have everyone welcome our new clerk. This is her first official meeting, so go easy on her. Karlyn Kraut Kramer has joined us as city clerk, so welcome. Just a reminder for the Alders, the microphones pick up a lot, so you don't have to move the microphones, you don't have to lean over and speak into it. If you just speak, John will be in the back room adjusting the volume and get everybody taken care of. So if you would now then, please join me in our salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the God for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much for coming tonight. We've got a pretty full gallery, which is nice. I kind of thought that we were on the downhill slide of this whole winter thing, but apparently we're going to get another couple inches tonight. So I want to remind people that when we have a snow event like this, applause are going to come through. They're probably not going to come through when you want, so maybe wait a little bit to shovel the sidewalk because they're probably going to push snow in my driveway and in your driveway, and maybe even throw some up on the sidewalk, but priority is keeping the streets clear. Then, once we're done shoveling out, if there's this fire hydrant on your block, please take some time and clear those fire hydrants. A couple of feet on each side of the fire hydrant would be a big help. We do have our firefighters and paramedics that go around doing that, but obviously their time could be spent doing other things. So if you have one, adopt a fire hydrant and clear it out. And before you know it, winter's going to be gone, and we're going to be onto trivia on the rest of things that spring enjoys. With that, item number three, is persons who wish to address the mayor and council on a specific agenda item other than a public hearing, they should register their request at this time through one of these white sheets. If there is a public hearing, you do not need to identify yourself until the public hearing is declared open by me. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item that did not sign up? Okay. One thing I forgot to mention, earlier this evening Senator Baldwin was in town, and we get together periodically as we do with Congressman Kind and all of our representatives. She is looking out for our best interest. I thanked her once again for her support in helping us obtain a grant for the fire department for some equipment, and told her that no good deed goes unpunished, so we're going to need her help again. We did bring up the Business 51 Project, and we talked about things for about 45 minutes. So I just want everybody to know that our representatives at the state and federal level know about Stevens Point, and they're here, and they listen, and they're always available with phone call from me. I've had great reception from everyone. Moving on to item number four, persons who wish to address the mayor and council for up to three minutes regarding a non-agenda item. We have a couple of speakers wishing to address the council on a non-agenda item. The first one is Lori Gloduski. There was an email sent through Alder Zarazua through the clerk's office in regards to the intersection at Second Street and Maria, and Lori Gloduski is going to take a few minutes to speak on that.
Hi, I'm Lori Gloduski. I live on Second Street North, and on May 4, 2019, we were in a terrible accident at this intersection. And there are very many reasons why I think this intersection is a four-way stop sign for safety reasons. One is because when we were in the accident, the guy that hit us was on Maria Drive to cross Second Street. We were riding on our bike, a scooter, on Second Street North going towards town, and we were going, and the guy decided to shoot through the stop sign, and he T-boned us and threw us off our bike. I was almost killed. I have disabilities. My husband almost lost his leg, and it took very many months to recover, which was still not recovered yet. My thought is, if we had a four-way stop there to begin with, I would have been stopped at my stop sign, and if this guy would have decided to shoot through it, that would have been fine because I would stop. I would have been safe. And other reasons to have a four-way stop sign at that intersection is, there is a grade school down the road on that intersection, and there's many kids that walk before school, after school, even during the summer. And I know there's a crossing guard there, but she can only do so much. And with having a four-way stop, you have people constantly stopping where kids have a chance to be a little bit safer. And also, there's two high schools in the same area, and during the high school times, during the morning, lunch breaks, at the end of school, multiple vehicles coming and going, and we know it, they don't do the speed limit. I know it, I've seen it. They don't do the speed limit. But regardless of that, there's so many vehicles, if you want to turn, you're waiting for a long time. If you're on Second Street and you want to turn like on Maria Drive, you're waiting a long time because there's so many vehicles coming and going. With a four-way stop, you have people, everybody stopping and taking their turns like they're supposed to, and still be safe at it. And also, there is a stop sign by St. Peter's Church, a four-way stop, but if you go all the way north, there is no other four-way stops, no stop signs on Second Street North. All the way up to Debate, there's nothing to try to stop the speed trap, I mean to stop speeding, because there's multiple vehicles that don't go the speed limit, they just fly down the road left and right, we see it every day. So I feel with that, that'll help with the speed too with the vehicles. And it'll also help with being able to see on the corner, because if you're on Maria Drive, one of the main issues with seeing is the parking on the corner of Maria and Second Street, which is the Final Score. And their parking in that parking lot is horrendous, so horrendous. On the very corner, which is kind of in the clear view vision of trying to see to the right when you're at that stop sign, you can't when vehicles park on that corner. And they also park over the sidewalk, which you can't, you can't, it's against the law to park over the sidewalk, period, for disabilities or anybody, anything, but they're over the sidewalk, so you can't see around these vehicles. And so if you're stopped at that stop sign on Maria Drive, you have to go forward into the intersection to see the vehicles coming on the right side, because when there's vehicles in that parking lot, you can't see it. I know he, the owner of the bar, did paint lines for parking, and he made a no parking on the corner, which was great, and he put the cement barriers so the cars would not go over the sidewalk, which was great. So thank you for helping get that fixed. But now those cement barriers are gone, the vehicles kept pushing them into the sidewalk, into the road, we've seen it. And so a simple, simple, simple fix for that would be if he would just put metal poles into each parking spot right before the sidewalk, so that way they can not go any further than that, and they can't push it out. It would just make it so much simpler, and it's not very expensive to fix. And then also somehow figure out where he has a no parking spot, which is great, so no cars can be parked there, but they are always parking there now since the snow flew, they've been parking there, these vehicles have been parking in the snow parking corner. I don't know how to fix this, my husband doesn't know how to fix this. We're trying to make this safe, because I don't want to see this happen to someone else, let alone someone not make it, because this is terrible. We've lost a lot of stuff. He lost his current career that he had because he cannot drive a truck because of his leg right now. He was a truck driver, he can't do it. So we're here to make this safe for anybody else in the future, because there has been multiple accidents over the years in that same area when we had looked it up on the DOT through Madison. So that's why we're here, to try to figure this out, and I need everybody's help. We need it.
Thank you.
We need this fixed. So thank you.
Thank you very much. To give everyone an update, Alder Zarazua and I met there this past fall, to talk about some of the safety issues, met with the owner of the Final Score, who put those safety measures in place, putting in the no parking sign. The city paid for the no parking sign to put up on the pole, and he put the concrete barriers in there. However, they had to be removed to get snow cleared. So they took them out during the winter. Having metal poles there would not facilitate clearing the parking lot or the sidewalks adjacent to it, so that's why that hasn't been done. They removed them from the winter. I'm not sure that there's a reasonable solution for that, but we have been in contact with the owner, the one to the south of that, Second Street Auto, had already painted the vision triangle area. Mr. Billings did the same thing on his lot, so it's evolving. We talked to the director of Public Works, boy, months and months ago when some things were happening, and having a four-way stop there sounds like an easy solution, however, when school gets out, now you're backing up potentially hundreds of cars at stop signs rather than keeping traffic flowing. So there's some challenges there, the Public Works Director is working on those. But to give you some perspective, as Alder Zarazua and I were talking with the property owner, and talking about how dangerous the intersection could be because of vision, there was an accident there. Students leaving Spash, I believe, they were coming from the north. One person was turning, and they had stopped, which stopped two other vehicles. Someone else, I don't want to say they weren't paying attention, but for whatever reason, rear-ended that car, that car was pushed into the car in front of them, and that was having someone stopped on Second Street. So this is challenging, to say the least, but we certainly want to make every intersection, every roadway, as safe as we possibly can. So we're always looking for ideas on ways to do that. I know the director is still evaluating that intersection. Next up, we have a couple of people from the YMCA. There's a youth and government group, and I'm going to introduce both Tiffany and Daphne, who are going to talk to us for a few minutes about their youth and government program at the YMCA.
Hi, everybody. Hello, I am Tiffany Prager. I'm the teen and youth director, teen and camp director at the YMCA. I'm here to celebrate these lovely people who are interested in government, in local government. And this is Daphne, our president of our youth and government program, so it's an out-of-school, out-of-school time program, and she's going to share a little bit about our youth and government program.
Hello, my name is Daphne Graff, and as Tiffany already mentioned, I'm the president of our local chapter of youth and government. And I'd also like to take this time to introduce our secretary, Matthew Caldwell, our vice president, Ally Rutiger, and another member of our delegation, Samuel Hill. They've been a great help. We all work together to run this delegation. It's not just me and Tiffany by any means.
I won't count into your time.
And then, if it's all right with y'all, I'd just like to talk a little bit about our program during this time. So we meet two Sundays a month at the YMCA for about an hour and 15 minutes in the evening, and this goes on from like September to February, March-ish, and then in February or March, depending on the year, we go down to the state Capitol to participate in a model government program with delegations from all over the state. So literally every area of the state. I think there's like one in Madison, one in Eau Claire, La Crosse, stuff like that. And not only do we meet at the state Capitol and participate in this model government program, but we also carry out both state and delegation-level service projects called Yig Cares, and those can be to charities in the area. We've done stuff with the farm shed, and I know that we've also at the state level worked with Briar Patch to get goods out to needy people, which is just something that the program contributes to the community. There are three branch areas of youth and government. We have the legislative branch, which is pretty simple, it's just like a couple of model assemblies. There's a lower house and then an upper house. And in the legislative program area, students can present bills that they think should be passed, that they think are good state-level Wisconsin bills, that then are debated by kids from all over the state. This program is for 7th to 12th graders, so you have like a wide range of kids, again, from all over the state, who have different experience levels and different interests and different knowledge bases, that they can really contribute to this legislation. And we've had program officials, students who are really high-achieving and who have been elected by the rest of us to represent us, who are working with state legislatures also to try and actually get some of these bills that have passed through our model legislatures into effect, which I think is really cool. And then we also have the judicial branch, of which I am a member, I actually serve as the court martial. It's a mock appellate court, so we basically emulate the state Supreme Court, we get to sit in the state Supreme Court chambers, we get to serve as justices, which I think is really, really awesome. We basically get to sit where the actual Supreme Court justices sit and listen to other kids, 7th to 12th graders again, delivering fake appellate briefs basically in defense of, sometimes it's completely made-up cases, but a lot of the time it's based on real Supreme Court cases, which I think is just amazing to be able to understand the way that our state laws interact with federal laws and interact with individual actions at that level. Sorry, I'm kind of nerdy about it, I probably went on a little bit.
Sure, most of us.
And then we also have our press corps, which I think is one of definitely an important part of the program, which often gets overlooked. These kids are working basically the entire Model Government Weekend, which is the Friday through the Sunday, running around the state Capitol, taking videos, interviewing people in the other branches for articles, working really hard to put together a newspaper, two videos a year, I think, don't quote me on that. And this year, a new addition, a podcast, basically detailing everything that we do while we're at Model Government. So, I don't know, I just think that it's really wonderful that we have this opportunity to be able to do this, and it's especially really inspiring to be able to come together with kids from all over the state who have all kinds of just different perspectives on life and different ideas about government at the state, local, and maybe even the federal level that we can interact with. And I think that it's really important to get the word out there and to continue working with our local state representatives and government members to be able to push forward new ways to help people and new leaders in government for the future. Thank you.
Daphne, thank you very much. Tiffany, thank you for contacting me. And thank you, everyone, from the YMCA Youth and Government for showing up. It's exciting and invigorating to see the passion that you have for the things you do. Sometimes we get stuck in the mundane and the routine here, but it's nice to see that people still get excited about helping people, so thank you. All right, the last person wishing to speak is Alder Mary Niebon.
Speaking of helping people, I just wanted to thank everyone for tolerating my absences from meetings due to my recent foot surgery in January, particularly Alder Dugan, I think you might have had the longest public protection meeting that we've had in a long time.
That's because I couldn't cut him off.
Thank you for sharing that rather interesting discussion. So, and the staff and folks that sent cards, it was very nice to know that you're missed once in a while. So just wanted to say thank you for everybody that stepped up.
Thank you, and hopefully you're getting a good and speedy recovery. Okay, our agenda's exhausted as far as non-agenda items, so I would like to introduce to you now Kristen Fish from the Central Wisconsin Economic Development Fund, who's going to give us a little bit of information about SEWED.
Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. I am going to talk about SEWED, which is the Central Wisconsin Economic Development Fund. I don't mean to turn my back on you.
That's okay.
Face both ways. SEWED is a loan fund. It provides gap financing for businesses. We have a 17-member board. It first was formed, it was administered by McDevco, then for a while it was administered by CAP Services. Now, Redevelopment Resources, my consulting firm, based out of Madison, is administering the fund. It's approximately a $12 million loan fund.
Kristen, I want to stop you there. I want to have you come to the lectern, and I'm going to come down and I'm going to run the slides for you.
Okay, I didn't know if the mic was picking up mine.
Probably not as well as John would like.
All right. Do you want me to start over?
No.
Okay, we have money to lend, that's the good news. We're here to help businesses grow. We have about $7 million to lend. We have been trying real hard to market the fund through our connections with economic development organizations and banks, and we're currently a public entity. Because the money was originally CDBG dollars that had the funds de-federalized, we really don't have any strings, any federal strings on the dollars anymore, so we could become a private organization, but our board members have desired to keep it an open and public organization. So we post all our meeting agendas, we meet monthly at the Central Wisconsin Airport, and, can go ahead and advance the slide. Like I said, former CDBG dollars, seven counties, it's Adams, Portage, Wood, Marathon, Lincoln, Vilas, and Florence. So we go right up the center of the state, and some municipalities participate as well.
Community Development Block Grant, for those who may not know.
You've got a smart council, I gave them credit for it.
Yeah, but people are watching at the moment, listening. They're just as smart, they just don't know the acronyms.
Yep. So the loan fund is supposed to be an economic development incentive, so in addition to making sure every loan has the proper collateral and the financing packages in place, we also look for it to meet certain goals. We want the borrowers to create jobs, but it's no longer a federal requirement. As I mentioned, the funds are now de-federalized, we traditionally have a lower interest rate than the banks. Originally, the fund was lending at 2% and 3%, but recently we've increased that to between 4.5% and 6%. We still, we don't want to compete with the banks because we work in concert with them, but we want it to be an incentive. And we do take a reduced collateral requirement often. We don't like that necessarily, but we know that we have to do that at times, and so we're willing to do that. We try to meet certain goals, increase property tax base, create jobs, increase wealth, eliminate blight, that's one of my favorite ones, and just talk to the local, whoever is bringing the loan forth from the municipality or wherever it's referred from, we know that there's probably a deeper goal in mind to maybe make a business, help them be successful. So we try to keep these economic development goals in the back of our mind at all times. Eligible applicants, for-profit businesses, they need to be located in the region, they must provide 10% owner's equity, and engage in eligible activities, which include acquisition of land, equipment, site prep, working capital. We have a micro loan fund that, and I'll get to that in a minute, but your typical uses that are eligible activities. Our main loan fund, we lend between $25,000 and $200,000, but we've gone as high as $1 million, just really think carefully about those loans. We think carefully about all of them, but our participation should represent no more than 40% of the total project cost. And if it's working capital, we lend for fewer years, if it's real estate, we'll lend for longer. Our micro loan fund is from $5,000 to $50,000 loans. We do not require a bank participation on that. We have had several borrowers borrow from the main fund and then follow up with a micro loan sometimes, so. How we've been working for the city of Stevens Point, to date, we've done 10 loans. The total amount of money loaned by SEWED to businesses in the city of Stevens Point is over $1.4 million. Right now, we're represented by Ryan and Corey. The mayor has appointed, and you've approved, these people to our board, and we're excited to have their experience because they're both very, very capable and helpful in the process. They add a lot to our board. We want to continue to participate, growing Stevens Point businesses, so thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
You want questions?
Does anybody have any quick questions? Normally, we don't do this for a presentation, but Alder Morrow?
What are some of the projects that you have been involved in in the area?
Loans in Stevens Point?
Correct.
I wrote them all down last night.
I can answer that too, as well. So the most recent one that we've had was through District One Brewing. We did part of their gap financing when they wanted, when they couldn't get enough funds upfront to start doing some of their projects. Sunset Point Winery's also been a client of the SEWED loan fund outside of Point. Those are the two that just come to the top of my head, but in this area as a whole, Plover Otto Body is a recent applicant to the SEWED loan fund, and Great Northern Distilling, so really a wide variety. I would say a lot of our funds are used for the food service side, but also we have a number, especially in the rural parts of the SEWED region, that are used for more of the industrial manufacturing facilities as well. So the folks that are looking to get off the ground with their companies, come to us for gap financing.
Kristen, how about if we do this? If someone does have questions, how can they get in touch with you or someone in your office?
Absolutely. My company is Redevelopment Resources. Our email address is kristen@redevelopmentresources.com.
And you could certainly contact Director Kornowski, the Comptroller Treasurer, or my office if you have questions. Kristen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Drive home safe.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, our consent agenda item is before you, item number six. Is there anyone wishing to pull anything from the consent agenda for further discussion? Alder Jennings?
From Finance Committee meeting, I'd like to pull number six, request for proposal for redevelopment, and then also the mayor's appointment for the Bike Ped Street Safety Commission.
Okay, Alder Dugan?
Yeah, I'd like to pull from, where are we here? Board of Water and Sewerage Commissions, that's number four, discussion possible action on adoption of a lead line replacement program. I'm just asking for some clarification.
Okay, we could do that without pulling the item.
Okay.
So Director, I'm sorry, is there anyone else that wishes to pull something for further discussion? Okay, then Director, could you address Alder Dugan's concerns, please? Alder Dugan, you have the floor, ask whatever question you need to.
Well, I read certainly the explanation in the report, and it's very thorough, and I just think that some of that in a summary would be helpful to the public, because all of us are concerned about lead contamination in water.
Absolutely, and all of that information is available on our website. Director, anything you wanted to touch on quickly, because I know we're much better off than a lot of communities regarding potential lead pipes?
Yeah, certainly there will be more information coming forward. We haven't drafted our proposed ordinance language yet. The item at the Utility Commission was to say, how do you want to handle any potential funding through the[1673.20]
funding through the utility? And what was decided on there was to draft language to allow 0% loan dollars, and that if we're successful at getting grant dollars through state or federal sources, that we could apply that as principal forgiveness on that loan. So more information to come. To the mayor's point, fewer than 2% of our laterals have anything containing lead, and at that, they're not whole lead, they're just lead goose necks about this long.
That's one of the things that people would like to know. How, you know, how serious is this? How many people are involved?
Hundred and four.
Oh, that's not bad.
Properties, yeah. Thirty to 35% of those will be taken care of by way of our five-year reconstruction plan on the streets that Public Works and Utilities work on. And the other ones that are outside that five-year plan are the ones that we'll start addressing first, because the other ones have a five-year solution already. So it's relatively straightforward, and we're fortunate from that regard.
Thank you, Director.
Sure.
Okay, question in regards to the lead pipes?
Yes.
Alder Nabel?
Thank you. Could you tell me if letters have gone out to the 104 people, residences that have, would be affected by this?
I believe letters were mailed Thursday or Friday of last week.
Okay, thank you.
And the letter is referring to a public informational-type meeting we're having for residents affected specifically, just so we can talk about what we're thinking about doing there and giving them more resources. It's a constantly-changing environment as far as the regulation of it goes, so we're just wanting to start off really early. There's not even a whole library of information to share yet on what we're proposing to do. We're looking for a little feedback.
Well, thank you. I think that's really great, that a letter at least went out to those.
Thank you, Director.
Well, thank you.
Okay, I would be looking then for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the items that Alder Jennings mentioned, which is the minutes and actions of the Finance Committee, their item number six, which is a request for proposals for redeveloping 1116 Main Street, and also pulling the mayoral appointments to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Street Safety Commission. I'd be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda with those items pulled. Moved by Morrow, seconded by President Johnson. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, would you please call that roll?
Morrow?
Aye.
Fischler?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Eleven zero, that is adopted. The item pulled, first item pulled, was a request for proposals for redeveloping 1116 Main Street, formerly the Fox Theater. Alder Jennings, you have the floor.
Yes, on page four, the RFP states that the historic facade, entry and second-story ballroom remain and are ready for reuse and redevelopment. On page five, it states that the roof has been temporarily patched, however, may need to be replaced as part of the redevelopment of the property. I'd like to remind everybody that before Christmas, the Director ordered a report. In that report, it states that the roof trusses in the front one-third of the area are deficient, just like all the other trusses were, and it indicated that the walls need to be braced, and it indicates that the marquee should be removed. None of these things enter into the RFP, which may be a problem later on, and I'm just wondering why they're not in there, if we're looking at transparency.
Okay. Director Karnowski, did you want to address that? Typically, what happens with an RFP is they submit their ideas. If they request an inspection, they get the inspection. All of the information that we have on everything that the city does is always available to the public. Director?
Yeah, I would just add that the, while those reports were ordered by my department and reviewed by the Finance Committee, I would add that a lot of this is, the burden of proof is based, is the responsibility of the proposer. And so because the Ionic wasn't able to get into the property to formally address any of the concerns that staff had expressed earlier, that burden falls upon the proposer that would submit an RFP relating to this project. Those items that Alder Jennings brought up can definitely be addressed and adjusted accordingly. We do have a little bit of time before this will go out. The tentative release date is March 2nd, and currently, I've got five individuals interested in submitting a proposal once this is issued.
Good, thank you. Anything else? Then I would be looking for a motion to approve the request for proposals. President Johnson?
Motion to approve the request for proposals.
Thank you, seconded by Alder Person Morrow. Further discussion? Hearing none. Let's get a roll call on that, please.
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Fischler?
Aye.
And Morrow?
Aye.
Eleven zero, that is adopted. The other item that was pulled was mayoral appointments for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Street Safety Commission. Alder Jennings, you have the floor.
Yes, like other Alders, or at least another Alder, I have raised questions about mayoral appointments, in particular, lack of information. I have no objections to the people that you have recommended, but I also know that, for the second time, Professor Robin Rothfetter has submitted an application. He has a PhD in planning with emphasis in metropolitan planning, policy and design. He is particularly interested in infrastructure, among a number of other specialties. Without this information being included in the packet, council members cannot ask questions about your appointments. I want to, once again, reiterate that it's important for council to have all the information so that when we make these approvals, we're making it in an informed way. So if we don't have that information, we don't know what else you have.
Sure. Alder, would it help, then, if I put in all of the applicants for the appointments?
Yes, please.
Okay, sometimes that may be significant. We don't have that problem with BPSSC or most of the other committees. By the way, we still have an opening on the zoning board of appeals, if anybody's interested in that. But I will include all of the information, with anything that needs to be redacted, of course, for personal reasons. I can't see what reasons we might have, but just so you know then, and I will include all of that information in future appointments.
Thank you.
With that, I would need a motion to approve these appointments. Or reject.
Motion to approve the appointment.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Slawinski. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, would you please call that roll?
Morrow?
Aye.
Fischler?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Okay, eleven zero, that is adopted. Item number seven is a request from Delta Dental of Wisconsin for a site plan review to construct an office building at 3100 Business Park Drive with parcels identified. Director Karnowski, anything to add?
No, this is a condition of the development agreement approved by the council this last spring. The Plan Commission has reviewed the site plan and would recommend approval with the sixteen conditions identified within the staff report of the Plan Commission packet. Staff would echo that recommendation and would like to see this approved.
Thank you. Comments, questions, or a motion? President Johnson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a request from Delta Dental of Wisconsin for a site plan.
Thank you, seconded by Alder Person Slawinski. Further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Fischler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
Eleven zero, that is adopted. Item number eight is a preliminary resolution for special assessments regarding the installation of sidewalks, Project 20-02. Director Badoun, anything to add here?
No, nothing to add. This is just the special assessment preliminary resolution for the sidewalk continuation program.
Okay. Alder Persons, what are your wishes? President Johnson?
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary resolution.
Thank you. Seconded by Alder Person Dugan. Discussion? Hearing none. Can we get a roll call, please?
Morrow?
Aye.
Fischler?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
And Jennings?
Aye.
Eleven zero, that is adopted. And our last item, item number nine, is an ordinance amendment regarding Chapter Eight Public Property, Sections 8.09 specifically to reflect the time of day unlawful to park within municipal parking lots. This was just addressed at our Special Board of Public Works meeting, and we're just trying to make everything in all the municipal lots universal. There was some time discrepancies because of Shopko, where it didn't allow parking until 8:45 in the morning, was brought to our attention. We're just trying to make everything uniform, so it would be no parking on any municipal